Okay.
Good evening, I'd like to call the 2018 August 28th meeting to order. Roll call please.
Andy Schaefer.
Here.
Andy Key.
Here.
Trey Robey.
Here.
Luke Gier.
Present.
Tyson Hacken.
Here's.
Matt Bilgrin.
Here.
Rich Garner.
Here. Tyson, do you mind leading us in the indication, please?
Our dearest Father in heaven, we're truly grateful for the opportunities that we have to serve this wonderful town of Rangelley. Heavenly Father, we ask you to bless us so we can make the correct decisions and strive to gain understanding in how we can better serve the town. We're grateful for the sacrifice of our soldiers and ask thee to bless them that they might have thy guidance and direction, that they can provide those freedoms that we so enjoy. We're grateful for all the many blessings that thou has blessed us with and ask thee to continue to bless us. We're grateful for the rain that has fallen and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Please, hold your mouth and lead us in the pledge.
Pledge.
Pledge. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Meeting of the minutes, discussion and action to approve the minutes of the August 28th, 2018 minutes, that's, that needs to be the...
Fourteenth.
Fourteenth. So it's, um, action to approve the August 14th, 2018 minutes. Does everything look good?
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the August 14th, 2018 meeting. I'll second.
So Andy Key made the motion, Tyson Hacken second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Abstaining.
Okay. Um, petitions and public input. The, Lisa gave the, um, flyer that we have in front of us from the Rockin' Bull. I think Jeb came in and talked to her today and they are looking for a donation to help sponsor their bull riding that's coming up this weekend. Um, I think Lisa said that it was a little, go ahead.
I didn't get it until later this morning and I told him, "We have to do that in a fund for public giving, which needs at least 24 hours notice." So I just told him, "We would talk about it and have a consensus that you would probably agree to give a donation and he would include that in the program and then we would actually vote on this at the next meeting ahead before the actual town council meeting."
So if we took it out of board discretionary fund, would we still have to have it?
There would have to necessarily be a vote. You could still just give me a dollar amount if you'd rather do that out of the fund for public giving. We could go ahead and put it on the agenda. It's not a huge dollar amount, so that doesn't necessarily require a board vote unless you want to give a huge amount.
So, I guess I'd like to see changes to agenda and add that to 14D?
Yes.
Is, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
And I think my thought is to keep it out of the fund for public giving because I think there's some other stuff coming up and I guess we can just discuss it more then. Any more public input? If you wouldn't mind stating your name and pulling the microphone close.
Uh, Brittany Campos and I was looking into recycling for Rangelley and I took a poll around town, I did some stuff on the buy/sell trade, I made a phone call over to Mr. Overton in Meeker and there is quite a amount of people, there are a lot of people who would like to do recycling. The thought is, after I was discussing it with Mr. Overton, is we would have a designated location here in Rangelley and we would do, um, well, they would do cardboard, paper, aluminum, different types of plastic. Um, over in Meeker, he actually has a bin where people can take their electronics that they don't need and he will take care of them instead of, because you can't take those to the landfill. And he said that, um, depending on how much he can, he is able to recycle, the Colorado will give him, uh, like a grant to help pay for it. So the goal is to keep it as low cost as possible. He said he spoke to, um, Mr. Brickses a couple of years ago, but he doesn't have any information left from that discussion. But all in all, it's, there are quite a few people who are very interested in doing the recycling and Mr. Overton would be more than happy to bring what he knows from Meeker over to here and expand his recycling up to over here. We wouldn't have, um, like it wouldn't be in front of people's houses, you would just take it to wherever it is. And he says there's, in Meeker, there's a lot more than he expected. They see at least 30 people a day and that, and from what it says on the website, they're open like 24 hours a day, so you can just take it and drop it anyway. So there are people there, you know, who don't and, I mean, the hospital has a ton of cardboard boxes that they could recycle, which would be beneficial for everybody. It would, you know, um, a lot of the places in town that are unpacking, they have cardboard boxes that I'm sure they would, um, you know, recycling them would be better than putting them in the landfill. It would save, you know, room in there, trashes and things like that, so all in all, that's what I have, so.
Brittany, do you know where they put their station at?
We have, we didn't find a place that we would put a station, we just were talking, like I just wanted to bring it to you guys, to talk to you about.
What about the place in Meeker, is it in a public place or is it private?
Oh, I'm sorry, um, yeah, it's in a public place. It's, I actually don't know the exact address, but it's somewhere where people could just take and drop it off, so.
I think it sounds like a good idea if we can keep people away from throwing every bit of their trash there.
Yeah, yeah, and that, I mean, that's always, but I did, there are quite a few people who commented that they actually take, like they're recycling down to Grand Junction, probably like their aluminum cans and things like that. So if we have, if we have the option here in Rangelley, I, I'm quite positive people are going to take advantage of it, so. I know that would personally help me not fill up my trash can because we have boxes from Amazon and stuff, so being able to recycle those would be, I mean, I'm only one person, but it would be nice, so anyway, that's what I have. Do you have any questions for me or?
What can we do to help you on it?
Well, I can keep talking to Mr. Overton and then I just need to kind of get clearance and figure out how to bring it over and, because there's, um, there is some stuff he was saying about, uh, Meeker subsidizes some of their stuff to pay for it and so we, I mean, just kind of, I mean, you can, I have his number if you guys want to talk to him or I'm not sure what the next step would be.
I was going to say, there was, they had to supplement it when we talked about it last time. I can, you know, talk about the numbers, but there, the town did supplement the program and at that time, I don't know, I don't remember if we brought it before the council, but I don't think that there was enough either interest or they didn't want to supplement it to the amount that was, you know, going to have to be done. So I can definitely talk and go into it.
Okay.
I think it'd be worth it.
Perfect. Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else like to address the council?
Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to kind of introduce myself. I'm Gary Moyer and I am the Republican candidate for County Commissioner for Rio Blanco County, District One, and I've met some of you folks, to some of you I haven't, and I wanted to introduce myself and, like I said, and if you've got any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them either now or whenever. Um, I kind of wanted you to know what you're getting as a commissioner if I am elected and what you're going to get is a, a fiscally conservative, uh, mul-, uh, big fan of multiple use on all lands, especially our public lands. I think the county needs to take as active a role as possible in pressuring our federal land management agencies to promote all uses of our federal lands. And when we say multiple use, we're not talking hiking, biking and camping. We're talking oil and gas, we're talking grazing, we're talking logging, all the things that are the tools they have to manage the land with. And I think, excuse me, the county can take an active role in, in, uh, putting pressure on the federal agencies to do that. I'm a lifelong resident of Rio Blanco County. I've been in business for myself for the last 35 years. I graduated from the University of Minnesota with a degree in forest products because my folks had a sawmill and logging business up near Meeker, just beside Meeker, and that's where I was raised and I, I think I can bring a level of common sense to our county government that my opponent can't. And I was just informed today, I do have an opponent and Reed Kelly is running unaffiliated and he will be my opponent. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Gary?
Yes, sir.
What do you think is going to be your first and your biggest challenge when you get elected? Right out of the gate, what do you think is going to be your biggest?
First and biggest challenge? I think, uh, we've got a number one focus on our land use plan that was just put together and that is really the roadmap and where we have some legal authority as a county to put pressure on our, our federal land management agencies. NEPA and FIPMA both reference, uh, the local land use plan. If it is in place, those agencies have to be consistent with it. If they're not, they have to legally justify why they're not. And that's for anything moving forward, not in the past. So we got to get on top of that. We have got to be very proactive in encouraging industries of all types to operate here, whether it's oil and gas or whatever industry it is, we need to welcome them, not push them away. And, and I think we have gone through a period of time in the past where the county at least was perceived as being anti-industry and I'll do my best to make sure that is not the case. Other question? I hope that answered your question.
It did, thank you.
Thank you. Good? Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Changes to the agenda, item 10A, review town manager job announcement. Um, and then, and then 14D, which, um, is a Rockin' Bull donation. Any other changes?
No.
Public hearings, um, so we have a public hearing for the first read of ordinance 690, which is an ordinance of the town of Rangelley, Colorado clarifying 2.12.010 of the town municipal code, clarifying that the Board of Trustees is not required to fill the town administrative position within 90 days of the vacancy.
The part that will actually change, I was letting you guys read it if you wanted to, is actually on page two and that is the section, in our previous municipal code, it said you had to replace the town manager within 90 days, which is a very short period of time. So this just gives you a little more leeway and outlines how that process will happen. This is just our first read, we won't vote on it, it has to be published twice. We'll, um, do the second read and vote on it in the last meeting in September.
So the biggest part says the count, the town council therefore concludes that the town code should be changed to allow sufficient time to engage a new town manager. Until that such time, the town council should have the explicit authority to appoint an interim. That's the biggest part of it, right?
Right. And actually, I think the old codes have that in there as well, but it's just basically giving you more time to search for a town manager so you don't have to replace someone within 90 days.
Can I ask a question?
You bet.
Is the previous ordinance also specified that this town manager didn't have to live in town? Or is that new?
I don't know that for sure, Jim.
I don't have.
But going forward, I think that that is something that needed changed, that needs changed.
That they may reside outside of town?
No, that they need to reside.
They reside outside town?
No, I don't think that that's, because I did read that also.
I think that in the past, they allowed them to live, like if they wanted to be on a ranch close to town, but that is definitely something that you can talk about and change.
I think they're talking more like they live down river.
Right, or just out county road.
You know, John's.
We should change that.
Although we probably do, it probably puts in, it is kind of vague.
Yeah, because I think Lance Stewart is, um, the town manager for DeBec, you know, I don't think we want something like that. We either say the town of Rangelley or, um, west end of Rio Blanco County.
You could see, you could probably put it at 30 minute response time per mileage. Well, I kind of stated at the end where they talk about it, any hour to respond to emergencies, you know, be available to, so we just have to clarify what, what we see that to mean.
And even though the ordinance says that, you can contractually with your town manager, when you hire them, put that into a contract as well, that it can't be any further than X amount of miles from the town limits.
Yeah, like a lot of other public offices, they'll make it within, you know, within the first 120 days, you have to take up residency within a certain.
But we can definitely change the ordinance as well, whatever.
I think we ought to change ordinance while we're into, I don't know what you guys think.
To what did you say, Andy?
I'm okay with the, within the town of Rangelley, or within 30 minutes of the town of Rangelley.
Okay.
Well, and I, no, I don't, I take that back because you can get right into Moffett County, you could live in Dinosaur.
What if we use the commissioner districts? One in, what are we, one in two? Or we're one in three?
The taxing district is what we ought to do, so mile marker or whatever it is from 44 this way.
Whatever the school district or the park and ranch.
Right, yeah.
I'll find out the verbiage on that and we can correct that.
So we need to, with the changes, will we have to do this again next month?
No, I will republish it and I'll obviously send it to you before I republish it, so I don't think that's an issue, that we have to reread it first and second, as long as it's published and we have a public hearing for comment after the change.
Sounds good. Anybody have any other suggestions?
No.
Number nine, committee and board meetings. Does any, anybody have anything, since the last meeting that we had that they'd like to bring up? I've got a couple things. A fireworks show this weekend will be on for Friday night. We, um, talked to the sheriff and he's, um, he's good with it, so there will be a fireworks show. Um, I don't know that it says any, anywhere in our packet, but that, but the hill climb is next weekend, um, and I don't think we actually got anything together.
It's the 22nd.
No, it's the 7th.
Raid's on Friday, racing on Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah.
The hill climbs this weekend?
No, 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 next weekend.
Next weekend.
Next weekend. The 7th, 7th and 8th. And then I guess, I guess we've never really decided anything on the, on going paperless? Is anybody still?
I have, well, I just got put up kind of on hold because we had other things going on, but I do have the, um, tablet that was there, it was a little expensive, so I had them send me another one, if you can take a look at it sometime and then I can get quotes on that because the other one was over a thousand dollars, so I thought that might be a little more than we were thinking of.
Yeah, is it something you guys are still interested to pursue?
I mean, I have my laptop, I can bring it, you know. I mean, of course it should be a, a government issue or, I mean, you know, when you start using personal devices for government use, there might be issues there.
We were going to get tablets for the council and they would be obviously inventoried and get back to the town when the council member were to leave, so.
What do you guys think?
Like what's most cost effective? Did we figure that out and do the cost? Cost of paper and ink?
Well, paper is always accumulates over time, so, you know, electronically, it would be cheaper over the long run to have the tablets and at one point you have to beat the cost, so.
And then it helps our recycling issues, right?
Yeah, there you go.
It's a lot of paper.
The, the.
Would everybody in the council get a high card or is that?
The board.
The board, that's what I meant, sorry, yeah.
So my concern on that is, uh, like, support on tablets. You're talking a three to five year lifespan on a tablet, so you're going to have to buy them almost every, you know, four years, five years, you're going to have to be buying new ones. That's going to get really, really pricey, but.
This is totally the council's decision.
Yeah, I have no problem using my own, I don't, I don't do anything on it.
I don't think I spent more than 350 bucks for this whole thing.
Yeah, and that's, like I said, it's, I, I just use my phone, so it's, if we want to go paperless, I'm fine with it.
I mean, we can certainly look at the cost and like I said, um, decide if that's something you'd like to move forward with it. It would probably, like I said, because we would just upload it into OneDrive, we wouldn't even send out emails and you'd just go in there and check on your package just like you would do emails, so.
So the, the tablets that you're talking about, are they specially, uh, you know, programmed with software or whatever for protection of government documents?
Yeah, they would have all the security that we have on our computers.
Whereas typically, you, you don't have that on your personal computer, right? So, it's all public information anyway.
True. So I mean, what's, what's the purpose of that?
But I guess, but I guess malwares and stuff is.
That, that in itself, it creates, uh, added cost, you know, I suppose, wondering if it was necessary.
Well, Microsoft 365 is the package and all of the, you know, things that come along with the tablet are probably part of the cost. Like I said, this is totally the council's decision, so.
Maybe look into it for the budget, see what some would cost for next year if you have time?
Sure.
Um, and then the last thing I have was, and you, you talked about it a little, little earlier before the meeting, was the Verizon tower?
And I'm not sure if it is. Tyson thought he might, that it was live, but I don't know.
Driving by, it looked like there was something out there, but the fencing was going out there, but I'm not sure.
I'll find out.
Okay.
Were you talking about if it's live or not?
No, it's not live.
What's that?
I hope it's not live.
Oh, what's the question?
The service isn't getting any better.
Just if it was back, if it was up and going, yeah.
Okay, I got you.
They were trying to get the fence in first and then they were going to turn it on, so.
I noticed it changed on the backside of Melon Himmel. That's about all I've seen. Um, are you done?
I am.
Okay. I was going to just jump in with some quick stuff that we had at AGNC on our last meeting. So Dinosaur Welcome Center has, the, in, in Dinosaur has come under a little bit of scrutiny from the tourism, whoever funds it, I think it's the Tourism Board or something like that. They're looking at possibly closing two of them down in the state and that is one of the ones they're looking at because of the amount of usage it gets or whatever. So we'll just keep an eye on that because that's a pretty important tool for us over here to, to reach people, so just kind of keep that in the back of your mind. The other thing, we had a pretty good update on Sage grouse and where they're at with that and they're hoping to be wrapping up that whole situation within the next three to six months, so hopefully that gets handled. Rio Blanco County is, the, the west end of the county is pretty well taken care of, the east end is one of the last things they have to do just because there's so little data on it, um, still being addressed, so there's that and the CPW showed up, Colorado Parks and Wildlife, and they did a little spiel on us, just kind of warning us that there's going to be a serious bush for the wolves, so, um, keep that in mind too, pay attention to that because that's going to get ugly if that happens. That's pretty much it, so.
Andy, did this specifically talk about our center?
The Dinosaur Welcome Center? Oh, yeah.
They have been for a little while.
Well, I called up there to talk with Madonna about it, so she said, "No, that they're all good now and they're no longer on the traffic block, it's not an issue."
That could have changed. We had the meeting, that would have been the 15th, so. It, it, it could have changed since then, but I know our newer state rep has been involved heavily, he was pretty upset over it, um, since he got them more money and they decided to chop his Welcome Center, he kind of said, "Wait a minute," so. Bob Rankin, yeah. So I, that, if that's the newest update, that's, that could be, but I, it's the state of Colorado, I wouldn't trust anything they tell me. Oh, was that out loud? Put it in the paper.
Very smooth.
Anybody else? Uh, reports from council, item A, town manager job announcement. And I'm talking about putting in, in the Herald Times, Colorado Job Service, SGR and CMO. Does everybody have a chance to look at it?
We don't need to approve it, do we?
This is just, can it go in those places and we still have, I've set up some interviews with the three firms that we talked about on September 6th and so we'll move forward and you guys can talk about, you know, hiring them if you so decide you want to do that. And anything that's coming in will obviously go to Marybell and then we did talk about either the council or the council will decide maybe if there's a small group that will vet any applications that we can get in prior to if, deciding if we need to use an executive search firm.
So we'll keep posting these until, I guess, October 29th or in the paper at least till the 29th, right?
Yes.
Have you guys received any applications yet?
Two.
Really? Local?
Jim, I can't tell you that.
Can you just give me like a yes or a no or a mixture?
I don't know the people. I know one of the guys. So I think on this thing also, we need to put, um, that, if they're emailing that they need to be sent to Marybell, not Lisa. And the ones that I have received, I forwarded on to Marybell.
Okay.
Is everybody good with this? Good place to start and then we'll have a meeting on the 7th, which is?
September 6th.
September 6th.
That'll be the phone conference.
That's the, there'll actually be one representative here and the other two will be phone conferences for the executive search firms for the interviewing.
So is that a consensus that everybody's good with this?
Okay, I will get those out as soon as possible.
Supervisor report.
I'll let John and Janet give a little spill when they get up to talk about their prospective agenda items, but, um, Tanglewood, Jeff and his crew are, they have all the lines, water, gas and Moon Lakes completed, so they're now working on prepping for curb gutter, sidewalk and pavement. The summer hires have gone through and tried to clean up Main Street, get rid of any weeds and such, so September Fest, we've got a nice, clean looking town, they're going to be putting up the flags, we are already, I did notice, but they're going to do that probably tomorrow in the next few days. PD also will be doing their annual bike rally at the, um, September Fest and, um, all the departments are working on their budgets. We will also start having our budget work sessions in September, so we have even more good things to look forward to.
Sounds good.
Any other questions or? That's all I have today.
Thanks, Lisa. Old business, I don't see anything on there. We're good?
Yes, we're good.
Okay. New business, item A, discussion and action to approve the special events liquor, liquor permit to the Rangelley BPOE for the Rockin' Bull on 9-1. I think that they do this, uh, yearly, they have, I think just, go ahead, Don, you can tell us.
It's a yearly event that we do and we do it for CNC rodeo. Uh, every beer that we sell, we make a donation to the rodeo of a dollar, um, and they've asked us to do it. Um, and they've asked us to do it. It's a good event. We like doing it for, for them, and, uh, kinda helps a lot there, too.
Looks like Chief Wilzik said that there's no, has, haven't been any issues in times past.
Nope.
I'll make a motion to approve the special event liquor permit.
Second.
To the Rangelley BPOE Rockin' Bowl.
Motion by Andy Kea, second by Rich Garner. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Don. Discussion in action to approve the rec- recommended bids for the White River Village apartment number twenty-two remodel for nine thousand, six hundred and thirteen dollars and forty-nine cents.
So I think you have all of the attached bids. Um, the recommendation is, this is for a rehab of apartment twenty-two that has been, the gentleman that lived there was there for quite some time. Um, recommendation, recommendation was for EMC Plumbing, Quality Carpet, and Mark Muller. Got an opportunity to look at the bids.
Have you had a chance to deal with all three of these people before?
Yes, I have.
And are you happy with your work?
Pretty good relationship with all of them, yeah, I am.
And this, along with the other expenses we've had, we will have to do a revised budget for White River Village, but I'm gonna wait until the latter part of the year, so we'll know the real deal numbers are close to.
We've had three vacancies this year at White River, which is not usual.
Which pretty extensive remodels. I mean, Teresa can also speak to that.
Right, they had to be complete remodels, everything taken out. There was old heat registers that were no longer operational, it had to be removed. New carpet, new tile, some of the bathroom fixtures had to be replaced, and of course, repainting. They were really old.
Damage to the walls and.
Right.
So re-texturing and.
So what is the rent on one of these places a month?
It's thirty percent of their income, and then also they, any medical deductions that they have, such as if they pay out of pocket for any prescriptions, eyeglasses, hearing aids, any of those things will also be a deduction in the rent. So the more expenses they have with medical, the less the rent is.
And then we're subsidized by the.
Right.
USDA.
So what, what do we overall get per month with subsidies and typically the payments? So. And is it a, a number that can be calculated?
The subsidy is running between, I'm gonna say about seventy-five hundred a month. I am trying to remember exactly what our rents totaled. I haven't. No, I meant total, but I couldn't, I don't recall off the top of my head, Matt, but I can get that information for you. Our total budget is like around ninety thousand for ransom, about that or a little bit less for the subsidy total.
And there's twenty-four units? See, we have any more questions for Janet or Teresa?
Are, are these, uh, are they available to be inspected? I mean, can we go and take a look our, ourselves to see what kinda condition, I mean, not the ones that people are living in, but the vac- there's one vacant?
There's one vacant right now. Yeah, that's one that has to be completed and logged.
Okay, I'd like to take a, a look personally to see, you know, what we're dealing with and.
Now, just, I can meet you down there anytime, and you can go look.
Okay.
And Teresa just went through an ann- for all, it was probably not an annual inspection, but the USDA came in, and they pretty much dictate to what the requirements, I mean, we don't have.
Level of maintenance, we gotta.
Right.
A year or two?
Right.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended bids.
I'll second.
Motion made by Tyson, second by Rich. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item B, discussion in action to approve, oh, never mind.
Discussion and review.
Item C, discussion and review of the draft emergency drought and water response plan. Don?
So I gave everybody the intel and gave you guys a chance to review it. Um, I just basically just made kind of a, a feedback. I thought maybe we would be doing this in a working session, but um, I don't know what kinda feedback you have, if you think we did all right with it, we didn't make um, any sound decisions in regards to the monetary value that we would put on for, um, higher usage. Um, there was some examples that were given to you, so. I, I don't think that we'll have to, we will be implementing any water restrictions this year. Um, our CFS currently is around a hundred and ninety CFS, and it's kinda trending for the last seven days, we've been right there. I think we're gonna be fine this year. So it's not a need to take immediate action. If you want more time to ponder it, and maybe prepare yourselves more, or if you have any questions, or wanna go a different direction.
My, my thought on it is, is like, it's a great document to have him, have ready to go, but I don't know what we would be implementing it for at this point. Um. I guess it's, it, like I said, it, it's good to have all this planned out and ready if we do need to approve it, but um, I don't know that there's.
Well, we like to get it approved, so you can move forward with an ordinance that gives you the authority to go ahead and implement it.
I guess what I'm saying is then, um, that's why, like, that's why you have emergency ordinances, if we needed to, we could just do it, with, is it, you know, it is an emergency.
Yes, you can, you can execute emergency action.
I would think drought is an emergent, you know, classification of an emergency.
We just didn't have a plan that was intact.
Right, right.
And knew which way we would move and how it would move, and, and recommending a response team. And the reason I bring this up, it's not just a drought. We can have an emergency upriver at any given time, and within a twenty-four hour notice, we may have to implement some kind of instructions as to what to do until the contamination is contained, it's passed.
Is your pest expectancy over the rates, or? I think you need to have some kind of response plan in place in our code. We don't have to do the rate structure per se, but I do think we need some kind of plan in place and not wait till D-Day.
Yeah, trying to put something into effect after something happens is not a great time to do that.
Can I ask, I didn't see any ordinary, maybe I just wasn't digging deep enough. Is there a, a firm definition of drought, of when this comes into play?
Yes.
And is it solely on the flow of the river, or how?
It's based on a few factors, but the main factor is the source water supply. And based on the demand that's given for the town on any given day.
So is there a specific CFS that you have to hit on the river?
Pretty much.
What is it?
For us, it'd be below fifty.
Below fifty, but it's over a course of time as well?
Yes, and it's a period of time that we are consistent at that, and it's based, so there's a lot of different factors that get brought into this. Um, the plan proposes this to the Emergency Response Team, and it's formulated by Town Council, myself, PD, Department Administration, and we would all get together before any implementation and say, these given factors have justified the means of what we need to do. Okay, is that clear?
What did you say we're at right now, when we're?
Two hundred.
Two hundred, okay, so.
We're fine. Yes.
So stage one, it says a hundred CFS for ten days. Stage two is seventy-five CFS for five days. Stage three is fifty CFS for three days, and stage four would be twenty-five CFS for three days, so they have that spelled out in there, what they're.
What our target is.
Page thirty.
Pause the record.
I agree with getting rid of the, the rate scale, but I agree that there also should be something, we should look at, having something, something in place.
I make a motion, we approve this with the exception of the rate. We can deal with that at a later point.
And that would be designed around an ordinance, so it would be codified.
And if I.
It would always refer to this as a document, that the ordinance would say that, that we would move forward with the emergency response plan.
We need to have something in place.
Right.
And this is always subject to your review and changes if needed, any, for any given circumstance.
That part of the ordinance, whether it goes under some sort of semi-annual, or, you know, every three years or five or something.
Johnson is currently in the process of drafting the ordinance for the town, too.
I, I guess what I'm kinda getting at is, I think this is, for us to be in a, to go into a, a, uh, an official drought, like if we're gonna say we're, we're on a, um, drought plan, I think that's something we should be voting on, and it should happen, or the, the council that's in place should be voting on at the time. That's, that's kinda my concern with it. I don't think it should just be.
That's part of the plan, yeah.
Apparently, where did I miss that? So I s- I, I did not see.
Says water on page twenty-six, cut into right under, it says, water management, administration, and enforcement will be responsible for the execution response. If you need it, does a town council.
We can put more clarity to that, too, if that needs to be.
This is just a review.
Right, right, right.
Yeah, we need to fine tune this, so this is the, the initial plan or the rough draft. This is not the actual plan itself yet.
Yeah, see, I'm, I'm not seeing on there where it says that, that we would be saying that we're in a drought, or we're in stage one, like, that's what I'm saying, is I think it, if we have the plan in place, I'm good with that, but I think what I'm getting at is it needs to be something we vote on that says, we're in stage one. We are officially stating that we're in stage one at a council meeting, or if we have to have an emergency meeting, so be it, but to where we're literally voting us into that stage every time. Does that make sense? Um, I guess I just don't like the generic, here, here's the rules, like, this is, this is what's, what it's gonna be. Let me rephrase that. I think it's good to have a standard to say, this is our guideline, this is what we're gonna go off.
Well, that's why.
We vote and say, yes, we're going into it.
Okay, so that's why we, we elected to have a re-emergency response team. And so you would vote the people that you want on this team, and they actually would be the ones that make the decision as to that. I mean, if you wanna change it, that it's a town council vote, I'm, I'm game however you wanna do it, but this is just the draft stage.
Right, oh, yeah, we're just discussing it, so.
So I need some directive, if that's what you wanna do.
I, I'm not opposed to a, a response team saying, yeah, we need to go into that, and then it comes before the council, and the council says, yea or nay. Um, we agree or we don't. When you have a set standard like that, it should be cut and dry, but I still think it's something that should, should be brought before the entire council, not just um, oh, hey, we saw seven days of, of this, and then we get a monsoon, and you know what I mean, like.
Well, that, that's part of it, too. We trend the weather to see what we.
Why would it help that the people making that decision are the ones that are the experts? You know what I'm saying?
I don't know who would put this into effect, except for us.
I'm not saying the town council isn't knowledgeable, but the people that you put in that place are gonna be the ones that know all of the factors that would lead up to an emergency response, and I, I would think that you guys should be putting your trust in them to make that decision. Cause you may not always be able to just convene a town council on an emergency response. It's not just about drought. It's all about.
Especially like a contaminant spill or something, or something like that.
I mean, it would be extended to all board members. I mean, if everybody's here, yeah, ev- everybody should just come together to make the decision. I give you the facts, you make the decision. That's kinda how I see it. Um, so I, you'll hear my rationale before you make a vote on it.
So, so the, uh, the tier, the stages that, that are, what, what did you base that on? I mean.
Standards in the industry.
Huh?
Standards in the industry.
Okay, I mean, it isn't about how it's gonna affect their river intake or other things, it's.
It's primarily a tool to defray excessive usage. It's, because you'll have some people that don't care. I mean, and they're gonna just water, and, you know, other people are struggling with it, and they're losing their lawns, but other people, so if this is so be it, they wanna do it, well, they're gonna, they pay a little bit more to do that. It's standard in the industry. I've been down this road. I've been in stage four, and I know exactly what happens. It's, it can get ugly.
Is there any meteorological data, you know, or, or, uh, for the future that, you know, any forecasts or anything like that that show any? No, of course, you can never depend on a weatherman to tell you the truth, right?
And we, we don't have any really historical data to go on. You know, at this particular time, uh, two thousand and fifteen was, uh, touchy but not that bad. This year was probably our closest to any kind of implementation of, of executing a plan like this, so. We're guinea pigs.
Somebody said it earlier, too, if there is a spill or something like that that comes down the river, there could, this could be, this could be a real deal without us being able to get together on it.
Yes, and that, so that's why, I mean, if you have the key players in place that says, hey, I mean, this can be, be a phone conference, it doesn't, I mean, how we elect to go this, like I said, I bring you the facts, you make the decision, or the team makes the decision. I don't make that decision. But I do make the decision of shutting down the water plant. If I think it's imperative and it could be detrimental to the well-being and safety of these town people, I will shut the plant down. I may be in trouble with the board for doing something, but my actions would be justified.
I doubt that.
Okay.
Do you guys wanna have a work session on this, or add that to one of our budget work sessions? I mean, like I said, this isn't imperative right now.
No, we're fine. We're gonna make it.
I would say, I would recommend we get rid of the rates, guys, don't go with the generic thing and at the time with. I mean, these rate schedules are gonna change year to year, so, um.
And then maybe we do it again with maybe a little different verbiage about who would be on that.
I'm gonna, I'll do some looking and seeing, too, cause that, it's not sitting very well with me, but I'll, I'll get back to you guys on it.
Okay. One more thing, I guess, talking about fines and penalties for violations, is that, I, I didn't see where it's mentioned in here, like any specific fines and penalties.
They wouldn't be, they would be in the ordinance, that, that, I mean, so once that comes, the legalities, and you'd have to have the attorney look at it, so, and that would be.
And then you'll figure out a fine schedule.
And I have seen where the police department has had to do it.
And that's probably part of the emergency. Probably ordinance part of it.
I hope we never go down that path.
All the more reason to support the, uh, the conservation project, right, White River?
Sure. The more, the better.
Any other questions for Don? Thanks, Don.
Thank you.
Item B, discussion in action to approve a certain amount to the Rockin' Bowl program, I guess for lack of better words. Two years ago, we gave five hundred dollars.
Five hundred, last year was a thousand.
So I think it. So I think in times past, the Rockin' Bulls brought quite a few people to town and the grandstands are full out there for this thing yearly. And I think it's something that there's more people that come from out of town also to this thing.
Definitely brings in a bunch. What, what's our advertising budget looking like for the year?
Well, I wasn't prepared to answer that. I don't have our last financials in front of me, but I do believe there's room if you wanted to do five or a thousand contribution. Cause I was gonna take this out of either economic development or the council's discretionary fund for donations.
I, I, I prefer one of those three opposed to public giving.
Yeah.
Public giving does not have a huge budget.
Right, right.
And also they really advertised the town. Would they, they would still do that, right?
Yeah, they're going to put something in their programs. Even if you weren't able to vote tonight, he was gonna go ahead and include us in the program and then they would take whatever at our next meeting. But I think if you're gonna use a discretionary fund, you can go ahead and make that motion and we can get, cut a check this week.
They also use our carrot man to belong there, their belt box, so that's kind of cool. Free advertising for us. Um, is that what we want to do is the discretionary or?
I'm good with it.
I don't. I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, thousand dollar request for the Rockin' Bull rodeo out of the council discretionary fund.
Second. Motion's made by Andy, second by Luke. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Informational items, board vacancies, scheduled announcements are all attached. Is there anything else that needs to be brought before the board? Will show us adjourned at seven fifty-two.
Thank you.